Hey Steve. Folks, this meeting is being recorded. It's also live on Zoom. Hopefully we don't have any Zoom problems like follow up, but if we do, we'll take care of it.
Check that for instance.
Team one. We'll get started there. So my name's Eric Iver and we're in Peel Town manager. I'll briefly introduce Travis Landry from Gole Palmer and Don Endrick from Gole Palmer. And they are our engineering company. This has been working with us for several months on this project. They have gone through several iterations of this plan and then onsite up and down the road marching, looking for different connection points and taking a careful look at this on the half of the town. This is a large, large earth project as part of a federal grant. So we are now being eighty twenty funded through design and planning process. If this proceeds to construction, we could also be receiving eighty twenty match on construction. Just by way of a little bit of background, this project started probably mid, mid two thousand ten, two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen or so. Residents were becoming concerned about the amount of people using Church Road, particularly once the other sidewalk went in. But there's been a longstanding concern there. And the two engineers are noticing on the wall here a picture of Church Road from a hundred and something years ago. They had sidewalks on both sides of the street. They were dirt and they're supposed to move in the middle, but they were there. But we've been working on this for another year, starting off the grant process. Darcy Woodmore is here. I want to thank her for her help in getting this going. And we've had some folks that have been consistently helpful in town, also the main DOT, Michael Birch and Brian Keizer's been helpful. And so I just want to thank the folks that have been involved, residents, particularly the feedback. We've received a lot of feedback on this, written feedback. We've had people stop us on the street. We've had people stop in the office and provide comments. So we have quite a bit and we've done our best to try to integrate that where possible. It's not always possible, but I think the important thing is that this is all a very public discussion. And we're early on in the process. These plans that we're looking at right now, they look, they look pretty good. They're only about twenty-five percent of what our engineers and the state would consider complete. So we don't have fine grain, but really we're looking to start off as a very rock hard. And that's what we did really when we started this project. We started off and said, well, what if we had one on one side of the road? What if we had it on the other? Just a really basic starting point for discussion. And we moved on from that to having a more refined approach. Met with the road committee and I'd like to thank them. I want to thank the road committee for their review of this. They're going to continue to be actively involved. And so we moved on and reviewed. We have several iterations and kind of brought in feedback. We're still quite a ways out. We have at least one more, one more public hearing on this to discuss another set of revised plans will come back after this public meeting and perhaps more need may. And we will then also be looking to move forward with vote at town meeting to help finalize this process. It's important to note that this does involve taxpayer dollars. An eighty twenty match is pretty darn good and we can get road improvements for much better value than we would doing it ourselves. But if the project doesn't proceed, we may be obligated to pay back some of the funds that have been used for planning this so far. But that's hopefully unlikely and I think the value here really comes down to a few things. One is pedestrian bicycle safety. These are things that I see as priorities. And I've heard from many, many, many residents, including ones that live on the road and ones that don't and just travel there, that that is a primary concern. Another issue that we try to aggressively look at is the idea of meeting community needs. And on-street parking has been something that came up a few different times from a few different places. Not just on Church Road, but also on Main Street. We have businesses there that we like to see succeed and you all know how challenging it is to find a spot there in certain towns a day. So the safety, the on-street parking, I guess I'll call it economic development aspect of this. But also the trails and the connectivity side, there's that intangible piece of connecting the high school and the fairgrounds and sidewalk that we currently have. So there's that symmetry there that I think is important too. So those are just sort of my thoughts on this. We still have a few years to go on this. We leave it in pot, but we've got some great partners and alternative over. Travis, to talk about the revised plan.
Absolutely. Thank you. That was a great, great summary of the history of this project. Really appreciate that. I'm going to touch on a few of those items that Eric just talked about. We'll do a little bit more detail on some of them. But ultimately, the purpose of this meeting is represent the updated design that we were able to develop based on comments that we received in our first public meeting. That we had, I would say, a few months ago.
A little bit, it was more than that.
So it's been a little while, but we have been busy and we've been working on the plans and really trying to incorporate everybody's comments where we can. And yeah, so I'll kind of go through a technical presentation. I'll summarize comments, talk through the design that we've come up with. And then once we get through all that, we'll end up to a question and answer. And if we can try to hold any questions just until the end, that way we can get the full picture before we we start to dive into everybody's question in detail and all that stuff. That would be really appreciated. So as Eric mentioned, this is, this is a locally administered project. The win number for this job. That's how main DOT classifies their projects and identifies them. This win number is two five one one three one zero zero. So I'm going to skip over some of the details that we went through just regarding the road and some of the details on these graphics that you'll see. I'll work through it briefly, but I'm not going to get into it with much detail. I'd like to focus more on, on some of the design changes that I made from our last meeting through our latest iteration of the plans. So just a quick overview of the, the public meeting graphics that we've developed. They are, as Eric mentioned, twenty-five percent planned. We have, this is a plan view of the project as well as a profile view. The project is located on Church Road, ends at Main Street and ends at the fairgrounds. These plans show a bunch of different colors and they all mean something different. Proposed work and the travel lanes and shoulders of the road, that is all shown in the yellow color. Grading limits, so where we're impacting with the proposed work, that all shown in green. Trees that are to remain on the project are shown in a slightly darker green. And any trees that would be removed as part of the project are shown in red. Proposed sidewalks, so kind of the purpose of this whole meeting, those are showing red. You can see up there. And also driveway and property owner information is shown in black. You can see the dash line. That's a driveway line. That property line, you can see there as well. So as Eric mentioned, we walked through two designs in our first public meeting. Our first auction was a sidewalk along the western side of the road. So on this graphic, it is the top side of the road. That sidewalk stand from Main Street stayed on the same side of the road all the way to the fairgrounds where we proposed a crosswalk. There was an eithenon that we showed. That's the grass strip between the road and the sidewalk. So that was shown in that first auction. And we did not show any on-street parking in that auction and we did not show any traffic calming. And I'll talk more about traffic calming as we, as we move through the presentation. Some of the things that we talked about, we talked about landscaping, we talked about trees. And we talked about maintenance of, you know, the sidewalk and the grass. The second auction we presented was sidewalk on the eastern side of the road. So that'd be the bottom side of this graphic. That auction we showed just for, you know, to get an idea of what we were doing. We did not show an eithenon and no grass between the road and the sidewalk. We did not show on-street parking and we did not show any traffic calming. We talked about hybrid options between those two kind of extremes that we showed and that's kind of what we've come up with here. And in both of those auctions, we talked about, we had drainage improvements that were going to be required, specifically new drainage pipes, catch basins. And there was all of that and we put it in both of those options. So in our first meeting, we got a ton of great feedback and I just want to walk through some of those items and just kind of refresh everybody's memory on some of the stuff that we talked about. So a few things that brought up, a question came up, did we complete sidewalks on the project? Have we been out there and actually seen it with our own two eyes? The answer is yes. We completed numerous sidewalks on the project. And we've done them before and after the first public meeting. So we've been out there a bunch of times. We've been able to get a lot of good feedback, as Eric mentioned, from residents and just from being out there and looking around. One of the other items that was mentioned was hydraulics and pipe sizing. So just making sure that the drainage that we install or are planning to install, sorry, is adequately sized and will be able to handle the flow amounts that are coming to it. And the long and short of that question is we just haven't got there yet. So Eric mentioned that we're at twenty-five percent and we just haven't developed that design because the most important thing right now is figuring out a layout that we're going to move forward with. So pretty much which auction we do. And once we add that information, we will begin to develop all of that, that drainage detail. There is quite a bit that goes into it. So we didn't want to, didn't want to waste time in the preliminary stages and, and have to do things to us. So one other concern that came up, foundation heights and building reveals. I know there are a lot of older buildings on the project, a lot of potentially historic and historic properties. So as we develop the design, we'll be looking to avoid any impacts that would, you know, adversely impact a building foundation or building reveal. So the goal is that we don't have any areas where we would reduce foundational reveals or have any impacts to that. On the same line, we have trees that are on the project that are very, great trees, large, old. We would be doing the same thing. We'd be looking to avoid any impacts to those trees and, and try to make sure that we don't have any root damage or anything with that. Utility impacts, we're all for discuss. Once we have a firm layout that we know we're going to move forward with, we'll be able to have a better idea of what potential utility impacts it may have. I know there is a water main on the project limits, so we've been sensitive to that and kind of coming up with a layout that may not avoid it in all ways and I'll talk a little bit more about that, but will evasive or significant. And then also we have overhead utilities on projects, C and E utility poles, communication, things like that, that we'll be able to avoid impacts to. But again, we'll have a better idea of that as we, as we move the design forward and get things progressed. One other, what I consider a pretty significant item of discussion was speed concerns, traffic speeding down the road. And we talked a lot about traffic calming. So we were able to propose some traffic calming with this revised, revised design. And I'll talk a little bit more about that. We use things like raised crosswalks and speed humps to, to help slow traffic and prevent them from being able to use that as a runway. We talked a little bit about rectangular rapid flashing beacons. We'll call those R and Bs moving forward. Those are the flashing lights at the crosswalks. Those, we do have one set proposed on the project at the crosswalk that we have. On-street parking was another item that we hadn't really considered before. Didn't think it was really an option, but based on, you know, the feedback we received from everybody that was at our last meeting and it seemed like that was something we should definitely investigate. We were able to provide, I would say, a significant amount of on-street parking with this, with this revised design that we'll talk about. We talked a little bit about entrances and being able to maintain current practices and even number of entrances. So that's something again that we'll continue to look at as we progress the design and kind of move forward. Again, right now we are at a pretty high level when it comes to the design, so we thought about a lot of this stuff. But it may not all be detailed down in the plans yet. Lighting was another item that came up and that is another one of those things where once we have a layout and know what we're doing, it'll be, it'll be something that we look to develop, but it is something that we will be considering as we, as we progress the project. And I think our, my last bullet point, my last takeaway that I had from our last meeting was that the public really wants to be engaged in the project. And we really appreciate that. It helps us really deliver a product to the town and to the citizens who, that they're happy with. Last thing we want is for you guys to feel like you're in the dark of the project. So that is just a few of the takeaways that I had from our last meeting. And now I'll kind of go through some of the highlights that I had for this updated design and kind of some of the changes that we made. So the project is still proposing a new sidewalk along Church Road. It is not going to be on one side of the road or the other. It is on both sides of the road in, throughout the project, not at the same time. So we chose to go forward with a hybrid auction of the two concepts that we presented in our first meeting. And Eric is going to navigate around for us, but he does have it shown up on the plan. At a high level, on the western side of the road, we start with a sidewalk at Main Street. It extends to, I believe, just past the partner's property. So once it gets just past there, we have to draw the sidewalk to the eastern side of the road and finish the rest of the way up to the fairgrounds on the eastern side of the road. So as part of that design, we needed to implement a crosswalk. So we have put our crosswalk, as I mentioned, at the partner property. Highlighted that crosswalk. It will have R and Bs, so those are those flashing beacons. And it will also be a raised crossing. So that is essentially a ten-foot wide speed table there. That is about four inches above the normal rate of the road. If you've ever driven over one, you know they're pretty significant. It's not like a speed bump. It's much, much more pronounced than a speed bump. So if you hit it too fast, you'll know about it. So we do have one raised crosswalk. We now also have a very similar, I'll call it a speed hump. It's essentially a raised crosswalk without the crosswalk. So they are going to have the same design, the same layout, just in two locations on the project. That second speed hump is located right in front of the meeting house. So that again will help slow vehicles down as they come down and approach, approach Main Street. We talked about on-street parking a little bit, so you can see that that thicker black line with the, this kind of dash, that is a curb line, so that'll be our proposed curb line. We have shown now areas where that curb line jumps out and, and the road gets a little bit wider. That's where we're going to be, I think, on-street parking. So it starts just before the meeting house. I believe that driveway, just about where that removed mill is, is the meeting house driveway. So you can see our first set of on-street parking stalls comes just prior to that. And it extends in short little bursts and then some longer as you move up the western side of the road to the crosswalk. The reasoning behind some of those, I'll get into a little bit more as I talk about some of the other comments that we've received today. But those, all of them is curb extensions or curb bump outs and those are just areas where we may never have curbed. For various reasons such as driveways, utility poles and even mailboxes, mailboxes. The curbing on the project, so that black dash line, we're proposing to use concrete slip form curb right now. There's a possibility that we end up with granite curbing just due to the historic nature of some of the buildings on the project. That may be dictated, that we use granite curb. So that detail is a little bit up in the air right now, but as it currently stands, we're showing concrete slip form curb. And also not shown on this graphic, but I'll speak to it briefly, are drainage improvements. With this type of curved roadway, we will need to install catch basins and underdrain pipes to help drain the roadway and get all that water, what is currently a ditch to, to its ultimate output. So that's kind of the quick overview of some of the stuff that we made for updates. We did receive some comments on this first plan since we provided them to the town in this meeting. So I did want to speak to some of those comments, just kind of give some information. And then once I work through that, I think we'll open it up to, to questions and answers. I think that's what we, we really came here for. So I think we'll, we'll move on to that after this. So some of the comments that we received, there were concerns raised about the current ditch and extending closed drainage beyond maybe where we currently have it shown on the project. Where we currently stand is we won't be closing off or filling in that ditch beyond what's needed for this project. And there's a multitude of reasons for that. And, and that's just, it's something we've looked at, but it does incur costs and things like that. So that's something that we'll have to kind of go through as we develop the design. But as it's currently shown, we're not planning to, to fill in the ditch any further than we did for the sidewalk that we have. We had a concern raised about raised crosswalk and just making sure the vehicles that are driving down the road have proper clearance over the crosswalk. Main DOT specified design requirements for that and we'll be following that. So we've used these raised crosswalks and speed humps in, in very urban areas where traffic is high. And we haven't seen, everybody says, oh, it'll impact it, but we haven't really seen major impacts or things like that. Even martyr trucks.
We'll, we'll member D Ds.
I'm sorry?
We'll member D Ds.
Well, that might be a stretch. I'll say that. I don't know if that would make it over, but I also don't see very many. So I'd say I've seen that. R and Bs again, one question came, are those continuously flashing? Are those user operated? Those are user operated. So as a pedestrian approaches them, they would push the button, the light would flash, they could cross. And then after crossing in a certain duration of time, once that time is passed, the lights will come. Another concern about bump outs at driveway locations. So the graphics aren't up anymore and that's okay. This is kind of what I mentioned earlier with those curb extensions. We'll be able to see them at just about every driveway and some in-between driveways. So this is actually a, a good spot to see. So you can see the, the first curb extension on the right side or sorry, left side of this, of this view that's at a driveway. So one reason we would provide those at a driveway and area of on-street parking would be to really delineate that parking stall and the driveway. So it doesn't matter how much paint you put on the ground, someone is bound to park in front of a driveway if there's not something to stop them from doing it. So that is one thing that, that we would say that is, is important about these bump outs. They offer great value from that perspective. Another thing that they do, and we always see them around driveways, is mailboxes. They provide a location to put mailboxes that is in line with the road that can't be blocked by an architect. So I know, I believe I've, I've asked Eric and we've talked about it, the mail is delivered through not a walking mail carrier, but through a vehicle. So if that, if that's the case, that is even more important, that the vehicle can pull up to the mailbox and stop. So that is something that will offer a benefit. So that, that kind of talks about the one at the driveway, the one on the right side of this graphic, there's really nothing around it. And you can see where you'd be like, oh, there's no driveway. What's the first? So that one actually falls and it, and it's tough to see, you know, the colors of things and all that. But there's actually a utility pole that's right there. And the intent of that is to provide a spot where the sidewalk is maintained at its full width, which would be five feet, without being narrowed up by utility pole. So we even, we proposed that curb extension to allow some extra space for the sidewalk where the utility pole is. So you'll see a couple of those scattered around. We also got a question about adding an additional crosswalk at the meeting house. Which we, I mentioned earlier, we have a proposed speed table at that, or a speed hump at the meeting house. And, and the question came about adding a new crosswalk there. Right now, there's only sidewalks on one side of the road. And without a sidewalk built on the other side of the road to receive the crosswalk, we can't legally propose a crosswalk. So that's kind of why we wouldn't. So I hope that, I hope that's okay, but that's just kind of how that falls. Another one that came up and I thought was actually a really interesting comment. And I think there are situations where we would love to say yes to this, but it's just not practical from a design perspective is reducing the roll width to nine-foot travel lengths. The thought has crossed many minds, I'm sure, from the perspective of slowing vehicles down and really creating a narrow environment for people to drive. However, the minimum lane width for main DOT's guidelines is ten feet. So we would have to make sure we meet that criteria. I'll say currently, we're calling for eleven-foot travel lanes and two-foot shoulders in areas where there's no parking. Where there is parking, we're calling for eleven-foot lanes and eight-foot shoulders. And that eight-foot shoulder would be part of the fault. And then also street lighting was mentioned. Street lighting again, like I mentioned earlier, we would just, once we have, you know, a layout in term and, and really know what we're doing, we'll be doing the street lighting and providing where, especially where we have crosswalks and things like that. Areas where it would be important to have a well-licked sidewalk and crossing area. Basement drains and foundations. I think that's a concern, a very valid concern. And we, again, I hate to keep saying it over and over again, but we just, we're not there yet. We're aware of them, so we have a bunch noted in our survey. We have what's called a property owner report, P O L. And I think some of the residents may have filled them out. So that is a form you may have gotten at this point, when it had been a year or two, maybe three ago, before the project really kicked off from a design perspective. And that would have just been your opportunity to kind of say, oh, I have a drain here. I have a well here, separate here. So we have that information for, for what we, what was received and will be considering all those foundation drains, leach fields and those, things like that as we, as we look to progress the design. One other item and my last one, I promise, and then we'll open up to questions and answers, was a question regarding interim improvements to shoulders. So kind of a temporary way to improve the shoulders. I know, I think the road was paved recently. There's been a little bit of shoulder material that was put down. I, without, without going through an exercise and really designing and, and coming up with interim improvements, we would say that's kind of something we, we would look to the town for. Because at the end, at the end of the day, we aren't going to provide a sidewalk, whether it's, you know, it's going to be built and it won't be gravel or it'll be paved. But that is something that we would include as part of our project. So the other sensitive area we run into is investing money into something that will ultimately be removed. I know that's, you know, from a, from a taxpayer perspective, that's something that we try to avoid and recognize that those costs are always at a peak. So I think now I'd like to open it up to anybody who maybe has questions or has any comments they'd like to give and feedback. I'd be happy to dig into any more details that you guys have as we get into it. But I'll open it up to, to questions. Yes?
My name is Peter Wells. I run the Water Association and I build that model as well. I know Rick Wilson's in for the first meeting. I just, I can answer any questions and I have a couple of things I'd urge you to consider. First year after Momma's was done, there's a water main break. They put catch basins and everything on top of the water main. So if you were to avoid that, that would be hard.
Yeah, our efforts is to avoid that. So we will, we will be looking at when we lay out all of our catch basin locations and our pipes, we'll be looking at avoiding putting anything over the top of it. What I will say is things like crossing the water main with a pipe or even, even running parallel with the water main with a pipe is something that very common. We actually see that all over the place with all the work that we do. But catch basins, we will absolutely be looking to put them in locations where they don't fall directly into top of that water main.
Well, there is a separation that
Right, and
occurs to be five feet, so.
Yeah, so, so we'll be digging into all that. We'll be looking at it. And I'll, we'll definitely have more information at our next meeting. Eric mentioned the formal public meeting. At that point, we will have drainage information laid out and shown on the plan. We'll be able to speak to it in all of a sudden.
Yeah, and as a resident, granite would be much better, much smarter. You can pick it up when they fold their rope and they set a pipe into the concrete. Might just suck wherever.
Yeah. I think I
Just one.
Granite is certainly beneficial from that perspective and it, it's a, it's got a long longevity to it and like I mentioned. So we'll be looking at both those options, both the concrete and the former as we go forward. And like I said, some of that may be dictated by historic aspects. So, thank you.
Early on in the, in your summary of some of the quote, my name is Henry Woodmore. I'm in Peel.
Okay, thanks. Or anybody could join me, Steve, if you could please just say what your name, where you live, take the awesome.
You mentioned something about water drainage and the transition between the existing ditch and the, the newly constructed sidewalk. What's going to happen with the water that's currently flowing through the existing ditch, I believe on the west side of Church Road, when it meets the newly constructed sidewalk and, and how will those two drainage? When it meets the the newly constructed sidewalk and 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 how will those two drainage uh patterns and how will the water be taken care of that comes through the ditch and into the new system?
Yeah, uh great question, um and I can answer that, so uh we will be looking at a couple of different options and there are a few different options uh that we we can consider. First, first one would be just a simple inlet, so we would have a pipe that is timed into a proposed catch basin. Um that would be either along the curb line or in parking stall, something like that, that would collect uh surface drainage in the parking stalls, things like that. So we would be using just a pipe that would inlet right into that catch basin and the water would then follow its natural path that it currently does, it would just be in a undergrout. Um so that's the first way we could handle it, the second way we could handle it is through a catch basin. So we could use a field inlet on a catch basin and collect the surface drainage and then do the same thing, that we put it into that proposed drainage system that is running along, not showing these graphics here. But would be running along the curb road um.
So just I'm I'm sure this is maybe more detail than you currently have, but however much water is coming from the existing ditch, needs to find a home of some volume.
Right.
And I just wonder if there's space or if there's private property versus town-owned property that's available to make that catch basin to handle that water so things don't get clogged up and.
Yeah, so one of the goals that we would have and one of the things that we'll be looking to do is. Outlet drainage and and water where it currently does, um so this is a unique project where we're actually, I don't really think we're adding much new drainage to any of these areas. So what's falling there now is gonna fall there in the future and it'll have the same, it's gonna be going to the same place when the. When the project's constructed, I mean, there may be some minor tweaks here and there, but the overall intent of what we do with our drainage drainage design would be to make things go where they do now. Um so at the elevated location, there shouldn't be much of a change, uh you may see a different way for it to get there, but hopefully it's changed a lot, um I think. Oh, there's one, alright, all set?
All set, please.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Steve Hayes, uh I live on Church Road, um basically the third house from the corner. And the general question is, are you going to add any drainage on the east side of the road? Cause at the moment, most of the water from meeting house down drains through my driveway into my back acre.
So. Where proposed sidewalk on the east side of the road, we'll be looking to make drainage improvements. Uh if you three should three houses, yeah, three properties in from Main Street, so at this time, we don't have any planned drainage improvements at your location, unfortunately. Uh but we do have an umbrella of the project, there we're getting the side. That all you had?
Oh.
I think I didn't, you haven't tried to answer anymore and I wish I had an answer right now.
Free ride or full ride road?
I think it said it was free. Free ride.
That was I was, that's what I was thinking, but people have had different thoughts.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, we didn't look at that very closely and um uh we had thought the maybe of the north uh and of Church Road, but uh we didn't look through all the deeds. Um and it turns out that it's it's three road uh all the way through, so that that lines up pretty well, those are the ground for for the markers, um stone walls, stone markers, all that stuff. So we're very confident in that with, um and we also do have, by the way, survey based on deeds, so we have a very good idea of where it's based on.
Yes.
I'm Bob Marvin, I live on Grophy Heights, but I drive a church road every day. Um you're talking about drainage, um what kind of standards are you gonna use to size the drainage, I'm concerned. You know, in April, we had five inches of rain in less than twenty-four hours and uh you know, these types of extreme events are probably gonna become more frequent, so.
Yes, uh those are those events that as an engineer, I hate to see because I look at what we're using for criteria and what we have for standards and I'm, holy cow. Now that doesn't really seem like it is, uh but they're interesting. So we use, main DOT uses uh the rational method, I'm not sure if you're, this may be too too in the details for you, uh but they do set a a procedure on how to develop drainage designs, how to size pipes. Um if you're familiar with uh certain years storm, um so we would be using, depending on um what we're proposing, whether it's open or closed drainage, we're using or from five, ten. Fifty, a hundred year storm, anywhere in that range, it just really depends, it's really site-specific and depend on what you're exactly that we're looking at for a drainage type. Um but main DOT does specify a bunch of standards for those and we would follow their typical practice for uh for that.
Well, of course, I'll put in the figures right now and have to dig it all up in a few years.
It does, and 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 their sizing criteria, I've seen. Actually move in opposite direction, um but we have. And we have this uh unique ability to have a gut check and and that's one thing that we use pretty seriously. So if we look at a drainage system and you see an eighteen-inch pipe up there now and we do this design and it comes out to a twelve-inch pipe, we kind of say, well, I'm not sure that that's something that we wanna do. Um so so we do have that in order to look at those and and certainly with the changing weather conditions, um that is something that we'll be considering and kind of looking at as we get.
What we're going on that travels, um so from the town's perspective, uh we absolutely wanna make sure that if there's a question that we're doing uh a larger. Infrastructure for this, uh because uh we saw Plains Rowers get washed out, all all those all those situations, um and we've um understood with DOT. They make valiant judgments about the cost of something versus the likelihood of it needing to be replaced in ten, twenty years, uh and I think that um. Certainly from my perspective, and I think the team's working on this, we're, as Travis said, looking to make sure that if there's a question that we're we're doing the right thing, um and planning ahead, so.
Yeah, I'm Heather Woodson, Main Street in Hills Hill, um back to. Mister Riley's question or concern about the east side drainage. The improvements that you're making in the drainage on the west side, should that help with the amount of water that is then coming across the road and going to the east side?
Right now, I can't really speak to how much water that ends up on the west side makes its way to the east side, um. My gut feel from being out and looking at the building on our site visits, I don't think much of that drainage that ends up on the west side makes its way across on the surface. The a lot of it runs through the ditch line down into the main street, um and that drain, that closure is just, so.
Like I tell you, none of the stuff on the east side goes to the west side.
Water doesn't flow up hill.
So I guess my concern would be. To plan ahead and when we're designing that drainage system on the west side to take as much as we can. And move it away from known places from our residents that are saying we have issues here, can we revert it?
Yes, yeah, so one and and. One of the goals that we would have and and one of the things that we would look to do with our new designs is to make sure that none of that new. Surface flow, because I mentioned that ultimately the full quantity of water may not change, but its delivery does, um and the parking stalls. Going in and things like that, I forget what's called an impervious area, essentially on the paved surface that the water is just gonna sit on top of, right now it falls into a ditch. Um when we're done it will fall into a parking stall, so that water is handled more differently. As we develop our drainage design, we would make sure that none of that water that does fall into a parking stall makes its way across the street, is that what you're more understanding? So we wouldn't, we wouldn't wanna add any additional flow to areas that don't.
Yeah, but there won't be any um let's see. Catch basins on the east side that would pipe it over to the west side where you've got the rest of it going.
Not at this time, yeah, right now, no, but we'll take your comments under advisement and see, see what's going on. We'll look at cross-sections, we'll look at the grave in that area, what's happening on the west side and the east side, is there drainage sheet going across the centerline of the road? Is there drainage coming down the east side, although we're not building the sidewalk, but then like I said, charmedating and heading out the driveway? If we have a way of helping resolve the drainage problem, we will look at it. Hold, hold now. Let's go in order, I saw us with Bill, right?
Alright.
Okay, I saw you first, so I'll get yours first.
Um Bill Green, I'm Blueville and then Church Road, which is similar here. Um. I guess my first comment, well. Everything I've made comments on, really is based upon direct observation. And today, or this past week, I saw something I have not seen in thirty years. And that's kids riding their pipe in the street to go to school. Have not seen that. Um and it was scary. Particularly. North of where the crosswalk is gonna be, because there is this shoulder there that's ridable, um and. Yeah, I I would think that somehow. We need to address the ditch north of the crosswalk. Just from a safety people person viewpoint of the people as well as the cars, if they twirl or miss a deer which crosses the road every day. They're in the ditch. And a minor accident becomes a big one then. The other thing that's wrong is when they dug the ditch. They undermined the leach fields that were in plenty of yards. Borrow. And the two houses north of there. Tracy Morrow complained a lot and the town re- looked, replaced the leach field. Put in a brand-new leach field for it. In the front yard. And ever since that ditch has been in there and we get a lot of rain, the 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 ground is saturated. Uh we get a septic smell. And this is not new to the town, the town has been told this time and time again. And how long are we gonna sit back and say, okay, yeah. There's a septic smell there, there's a problem there and environmentally we need to address that. And if you fill in the ditch, then the leach field won't drain from the high water in into the open ditch. It'll just continue. Under the road. That's my major concern right now. Speeding. I'm. The speeding is not the same in East direction. Now that's interesting and. People are coming forty-five, fifty miles an hour way up the hill, a couple of miles, and they're not slowing down till they get to about the meeting house. The meeting house, that's when you see they put the brakes on, the brake lights. Um. On the other hand, going north. Um you turn the corner. Pedal to the metal. And. It's amazing, uh you know. You could tell when the school was out, um about two-thirty, because there was a continuous drag there, it's going to the uh the pervert and. I don't know what the record is. They never told me.
So. I can offer some feedback, hope you.
Well, my my point is that your your bump outs, so to speak, aren't gonna do anything with the speeding and the northbound direction.
So. So one thing that we are proposing on the project is minimize speed or help reduce speed, this. Whether uh minimize, but is the speed humps and the tape, this raised crosswalk that it's being taped. Um so we currently have two proposed uh on the stretch, we have that one right in front of the meeting house and we have one at the crosswalk. One thing we can look at is whether or not maybe we install there, um so they work best in numbers, they're one of those things that if you put one, it actually does the opposite. And Bill, I don't think we were at our last meeting, were you?
No, you held it while I was on the path.
Oh, shit. So. So this is this is something that uh we go into a little bit of detail and I'd be happy to offer more, they work best in numbers and one thing that is has been observed is when there's one. It actually does the opposite, if someone goes over it and then they're like, okay, I'm over the obstacle now, I can go fast. And they really, they really pin it and get going, so what if there are multiple in succession, it's it's able to pose that continuous benefit. Uh and that's definitely something we can look at is is maybe maybe another one ends up a little bit further up the hill, um closer to the fairground side of things, there are. So, so should it, should that be on the opposite side of Fairground entrance on the town?
Yeah.
So one thing is slow, there's a speed zone drop right in that area too, right?
Yeah, there's plans in that, about eighty-five is the suggested speed limit apparently.
Yes. So there are speed requirements to when we can use them, um and they tend to be a lower speed item, just because. We call them speed humps and race crosswalks, but if you hit them fast enough, they're jumps, uh they're not, they do kind of the opposite, so. So there are speed requirements, we'll definitely look at that, I think one item that came up on our last meeting was changing the speed limit and I think Eric spoke to this as a historical item where a speed study was done. And it actually came back because of how that's calculated and it came back that they hired a speeder. And then at that point, he's like, never mind, we're just gonna forget that we did this study and we'll keep it how it is. Uh that's something that actually ends up happening, I think, a lot more, I very rarely advise a speed study that came back with a lower speed limit, it's usually right about where it's at or sometimes higher. Um so we can't do much with the speed limit, but we can use these raised uh tables and speed humps to to minimize speed, especially.
Well, I think you're very short-sighted, the town is. If they don't do something about the septic smell.
And that is definitely something that I think we will.
And maybe we discuss one of them, you know.
Yeah, so hearing that concern be reiterated, I think it's definitely something that we'll we'll discuss with the town, kind of see whether or not um there's something that we can make.
And I've called to my neighbors and they smell too, okay? Not me.
Uh before I jump to the back two gentlemen, I know a couple of others, who are hand up right before we got to Bill, I just wanna give you guys a a chance if you still have a question or a comment.
I love the difference from half and two, so I don't know. I did have a question, yeah, um one of them was, you'd mentioned um if people have perimeter drains or drains that going going into the ditch. And you said, oh, we filled those capers out three years ago, and yes, I do remember filling out a paper, but I just, how do we know if we remember to put that down there?
Uh just say who you are, please.
Oh, we're sorry, Rosalie Kimball, Church Road, yes.
So we can take the look back through, um one thing that we can do for our next public meeting, and I don't know if this helps or not, but we can call, we can call out those. Um so if you know you have one and maybe in our next public meeting, don't see it noted, we'll provide what we can for information, um and where we do have it at. And if if at the next public meeting or um next time the plans are are made available, you notice that it's not shown, we can get that out there. And. Then I guess just for the record, if we can get, show hands or names of folks that do have a foundation drain that they do tie into the existing ditch today, I think. This is a Zoom meeting recording, so we have that out there, so thank you.
And my neighbor up to the north has not only a foundation drain, he has a sunblock. Because the uh. As we saw during, when they had the double two-inch drain falls, uh the ground was so saturated. That line outlet was at the water level as in my basement, so it didn't drain.
Is your name this?
Bill Green.
And your neighbor's name is?
Um Gee Mon there.
Okay, alright, I see.
And and he has two drains, you know, you know, line. Line is probably, I'd have to show you version.
Okay. I saw other hands raised for foundation drains, your name?
Christine Poohman, fifty-eight Church Road.
Thank you.
Um ours is currently uh it's getting filled in uh after the roadwork that was done, so it's kind of like him. Um so I just don't want to get forgotten.
And that's why we're here today, your name?
Um Rosalie Kimball.
Yeah, yours?
Um it's fourteen Church Road, but my drain actually comes under my driveway and comes out in front of twelve Church Road, in front of the uh the drainage garden.
Thank you, any other foundation drains to note today?
We we have a major. Uh at the making house. Around the drain around the foundation. Very visible.
Yeah, so we've seen some surveys picked up some, Travis said we consider them in the design, as long as we know they're there. Our design will accommodate them, so um it's, right now they tie into open ditch, we may be filling in that ditch and putting in underground drainage. The DOT has the design detail of how they tie that, your foundation drain into that underground system, so um so it's it's. It's pretty detailed what they they end up doing, but as long as we know about it, we'll show them the plans, we carry pay items for it, and then during construction. And then during construction, it definitely there will be more found during construction and if they find them, they find them. So that's that'd be effective, so um. Get to the point Travis is right, we should be able to show it on the next set of plans that we have. So you could look at your properties, see if it's identified, if it's not, flag it to us. And then obviously when construction starts, so years from now, hopefully. Um you see the contractor out there, go up, talk to him, talk to him and say, hey, just so you know, I got a foundation drain there and that off the goal.
Yeah, Jim took me, I'm speaking on behalf of the media, that's true. Uh and uh. My two points, they all appreciate we are a general design feature for the project, this sidewalk, or school west side. Especially the eleven parallel pocket spaces, uh twenty twenty, excuse me, I think I counted twenty parallel pocket spaces. And the timing is perfect because we're spending our use particularly in the vestry. The next year or two with pocket advantage is gonna increase. That would work fine until two years later, if you're questioning property rights.
Thank you.
Yeah. Uh TJ, it was a little mysterious on the toll road in uh Rayfield. I just was thinking that it would be probably a little bit of ten dollars maybe, but if we go. Um I think it's effective at any any furniture or residence, if you could have some blind think up to just pop out the rain. I think that would be a really effective method and all.
Are the same.
And all things one, usually expensive as well.
Yeah, um Darcy with more Giles Road. And I can't really quite tell, um I don't have my glasses. Um is the esplanade, it's still in play or not?
It is, so there are a few isolated areas that doesn't stretch the whole project. Uh but there are a few mostly where we have those curb extensions and curb encounters. Um so you can see there's a greenish paper tooling yellow with a gray. Uh of a sidewalk, that would be areas where they would be in brackets for.
Okay, yeah.
Or landscape, yes, I think we we talked about that um during our last meeting. So the landscape is sure for sure on the table, um but we're just. I had one back there, I'll jump to the front.
Um just talking about the safety up by the fairgrounds, is there things we can do signage wise, like way before? I not that it made any kind of good a difference, but Carol, you know, crosswalk ahead and you. Oh, uh Carol Doran on Main Street, Rayfield, um. Like. Speed bump approaching or crosswalk approaching, then I was going through a wave the other day and they actually had a flashing. Um diamond shaped sign that said approaching village or something, I mean something that catches their. Because once they come flying over that hill and that light flashing, it's a bit too late.
Yeah, so leading up to the any of the speed humps that we've proposed or the crosswalk, we would absolutely have signage uh that accompanies those features. Um so so there will be signs that kind of lead up to speed hump, you know, and there's an advisory speed fifteen mile per hour. I believe that's what we we put on there. Um and then also for the race crosswalk as well, we have a similar similar signage pattern leading up to it. Um I can't speak to a villager any sign, I'm not sure if there's criteria for that. Um or or what goes into that determination. Um but I can say with confidence that the the speed humps and the race crosswalk we have, we have a sense of that.
And one other thing, right at the end where the crosswalk goes, um I noticed Dave Morrow's driveway is right after the sidewalk ends. And I'm just wondering about all this pushing water from the ditch meeting the sidewalk right where his. Um driveway is, I just see that thing getting like. Uh. You know, run away um quite often. And he's not here, I don't think, and he just had a whole bunch of excavation and big rocks and stuff done on his property. So I don't know, you know, his property is depending for where this is going. But I can see all of that coming right in his driveway location that I would be a bit concerned.
Yeah, so that's one of those things that we'll look at as we pull together the drainage design and kind of start sizing pipes and figuring out what's needed. Um that's something that we would be looking at uh and what's the best way to inlet that water into our main drains.
Will you have the drainage done for the next meeting?
We will have it mostly complete, yes.
So right now you're showing taking out?
Yeah, so we had a couple of rules there. Uh but we haven't shown any of the new rules.
There'd be a new button put in there. Yeah, to answer the question, that closed drainage will will start before the runoff, uphill the runoff.
Right.
So then we'll figure out that ditch terminates at that driveway and be caught in a catch basin or piping. And then it'll start continuing underground. And in the area of the sidewalk where there is a ditch, most likely that ditch is gonna disappear. And we'll try to grade all the sites, a lot of the site grades to that ditch from the houses. We're gonna try to grade that now to the sidewalk, across the sidewalk, even the curved road, so you don't have water pouring from people's property. So what kind of our objective is. Uh at the next meeting, we definitely will show the plan view where we might have basins, take pipes. Perhaps it's common, we may not have all the inverts, how deep things are exactly analyzed, I'll tell the contract just for the next meeting, but. We'll take drains and these planning labs, so we'll be able to tell you where we can take, so I'll go.
Can you use a. Basin? And then you do a general swell for the. Current drainage as opposed to a ditch.
And I got one more, I'm sorry. And I about the esplanade, did you say that where those are located, a lot of times it's mailboxes or utility pools, is that why they're in those locations?
Yep, so it would be to differentiate driveway locations and make sure that people aren't able to park in front of a driveway. Um also mailboxes and areas.
And helping the mailman deliver a little more, that's that's based up, because I'm not in this, we're not a fan, but I see the purpose of that.
Can you speak to the construction schedule?
Uh right now, I cannot speak to the construction schedule. We think it would take about a year, one construction season um to construct as well. I would really see, um but as far as when exactly it is, I think we're looking at. I'd check out in twenty twenty five for construction.
Well, that'll slow traffic.
We'll we'll be able to, we'll we'll be able to provide more information uh. At our next meeting, we'll have it now.
Great reminder from you. Um so a couple of things, Catherine Wenzel, um Main Street, also Chair on the Select Board. Uh we're looking to bring an article to the town meeting in twenty twenty four, which is in June. And I assume that the next year. In until up till the next spring, so the next like eight months is the rest of the planning season if the project is. And then construction would be in that construction season of twenty five.
Yes.
I mean, that's that's the general plan as it stands now, barring other things coming up.
And I believe that sounds that sounds reasonable.
And if for some reason we don't approve the project, then obviously it's not happening. Um and if we don't bring it for approval in time because something delays, then obviously everything moves out another year on each part. Um I can speak to the Wayne Village signs and the flashing signs and markers. That was all done through an AARP grant with their aging, their age friendly committee. Uh so and was paid for by grants, so that's something that we could ask our town committee to do. Uh or whomever. Uh so that's how that gets approved. I don't know how they did that with DOT, but if it was done in Wayne, it can be done in Rayfield. It's a state highway, just like seventeen is and it's forty-one, you know, that's not forty-one, is it, it's Church Road.
No, so so Church Road is a local road, that's one reason why this is a locally administered project. Um I wish that this was on uh a road that DOT was was handling. Uh because I it is gonna be a lot of work, I'll just say this, um to manage a federal project with all the criteria. The bidding process um is unique. Um uh there are a lot of nuances here. We do again, great support from the state, you know, need to help me just get money and guidance from our our engineers. Uh but really it's a locally administered project, that means that the road committee, um my deputy road commissioner and myself would be pretty busy looking at this. Uh and and helping make sure that all goes smoothly.
And then my question or comment. So where the construction project goes into what people consider their yards. Which actually is probably part of the right of way. That's a huge part of my property on seventeen and a lot of what I call my yard is actually not mine, I understand that. So when you encounter, when. When whoever the contractor is encounters these items, uh be they a rock wall or a perennial garden or whatever, what happens to those? Who's responsible for those? Do they get removed and replaced? Do they get removed, are they just destroyed? Is there time for people to plan? Who pays for it, those kinds of questions, I'm sure people on Church Road would like to know about.
Yep, and I can offer some information and I'm sure Don will, Don will will uh be able to to chime in and and help out with that here. Um so that, a lot of that, those details get worked out through the right of way process. Um that is a process that the Department of Transportation follows and it's a federal. Where there's where there where water has money, kind of dictates how that process goes. Um for this one, I believe this they have, it has state funding. Um so the town will be responsible for moving through the right of way process. However, I mean, they have to follow the criteria set by the state right of way process. Uh so if we, so through that, there'll be uh evaluations. Well, the first step is us determining what the impacts to everybody's property are. Um. Where do we stray from the town's right of way? What do we do beyond that right of way, what work is proposed? Uh and then once all that's determined and what will be impacted, will a tree be cut down, will a garden be impacted? Um a flower bed, things like that. Once that's all determined, we start the right of way process. Uh that will then. Start by having evaluations of everybody's property or or the impacts to everybody's property. Um all those impacts will be reviewed with the residents. Uh and so everybody should be aware of what's going to happen in front of their their house. There is a compensation aspect to that process where uh the project would would essentially pay everybody for the impacts to their property. And that's determined through a valuation of those impacts. Um that all follows safety, natural balance for that process, so. I hope that answers your question.
I think it does, I know that when we did the initial um project estimate, there was money put in for the. Right of way. I think it was twenty-five hundred dollars per property was put into the budget, but I think it's fifty thousand dollars. Um so I know that there's some funding there, I just didn't know what the process was, and so that's helpful. But I think that's something that people have concerns about and maybe don't want to ask. So it's easy for me to ask. And then you had mentioned, it's Dawn, right?
Yes.
That. The grading may be done so that if the. The land currently slopes down into the ditch and now the sidewalk may be higher than that, because that would be filled in or graded to it.
But our objective is right now, people's front yards drained into the ditch. We want to maintain that and have a drain away from their house to the road. So if the ditch isn't there, it's gonna go across to the gutter of the road where the curving is and get caught in our closed drainage. So we're gonna look at that for the intent to make sure we're not creating a drainage problem by filling in the ditch.
Okay, and all of that work expense and reseating is all done by the project?
Yeah, so so to answer your question, our goal, when you look at these plans and Travis described it very well. There's a right of way line that shows on there's a black dash line on everybody's property. Our goal is to keep our sidewalk inside that right of way. Uh not always the case, but I think for the most part Travis, we're we stay inside the right of way that that's owned by the town. Um and so as long as we're working inside that right of way area, there's no compensation to the adjacent property owners. However, you'll see, like for instance, the the gray side, the gray sidewalk going left or right on the sheet. Uh there is actually, it's hard to tell, but on the top side, there's a dash line, that's our right of way.
Right.
So you can see we've maximized our right of way, we put the sidewalk right at the edge of the right of way, so we believe it's on town property. So there's no compensation to the property owners, however, behind it. You see that that red C line, the line with a bunch of Cs on it, and you see some green in there? That's the regrading of people's lawns. So our contractor will be paid to regrade people's lawns to blend it into my sidewalk. That is on the right property side. So that part of it, the town will need to do is to to work with every property owner to let them know the, we need to regrade your driveway, we need to regrade your lawn. Our contractor is gonna pay for all that. But you, you give them access to go on your property to do that. And so that is part of the damages that Travis mentioned, there's a formal appraisal process where an appraisal will look at that and say. Okay, this property is owned, is due this compensation for a temporary impact. Not a permanent easement, but it's a temporary construction, you know, to allow the contractor to go on your land to do this regularly. So that is a process that can take up to twelve months unfortunately. So we're gonna move the design forward until we get to about seventy-five percent design, we're at twenty-five right now. Um we should be at seventy-five by the time um going to vote. I think both the designer, we put a block in, the right of the process, and starting with, it's as likely as it is to design a project.
And can we assume that green strip that goes past the right of way is drawn to scale? So if the sidewalk is shown and that's about five feet, then we're only talking maybe three feet.
Correct. And I'll give you just a quick disclaimer to that, what's shown right now is just an offset. Uh we think it's gonna be about there, but we don't know for sure. Uh so one thing we have to do, Don mentioned earlier, is kind of cross sections. Um and determine what exactly every fifty feet down the road, what is that point? And we'll know exactly what that point is. So we'll do that and then between there, we straight line it, so those lines. Most likely will change, some may come closer to the sidewalk, some may go further from the sidewalk. Um but one thing I would just note, and and Don said it. As a resident on the project, you're not expected to pay for any of the work. So indirectly from tax money, but um you don't have to cut a check to the contractor who's doing this work. Um and. You know, when all is said is said and done, you will likely, if your property is impacted and they do work on your property. You would be compensated for those damages, but you would not have to pay the contractor for that.
Thank you.
Yeah, and and. There's some caveats to to Travis's statement, for instance, if you have a fence. That you think is all on your property, but is actually inside the town's right of way. And that's impacted by the property. Federal state money will not pay to reset that fence because it wasn't on your land, it's on there. So they'll take you down, they'll set it on your property and it's up to you to judge. So there there are some unique situations, I don't see that in this case, I don't think we have any of that. But a sign, you had a business sign and the sign was actually inside the town's right of way, then on your own land. They might take the sign down for any property, but they're not obligated for the backup.
But they wouldn't destroy those items.
Correct.
There would be a conversation that takes place at that, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Uh you had your hand up first and then we'll jump over.
Uh Henry, for more Rayfield, uh just follow up on Darcy's comment about the esplanade um and and sort of the catchphrase about it. Uh less pavement, more green, more permeable surfaces, that's all the better. So that's just kind of hopefully a prevailing sentiment uh in the project. Uh another comment I had uh was about lighting. Um I uh really don't appreciate night lighting much. Um and if I were a house on Church Road across the street or on the same side of the street as a new um light. Uh safety notwithstanding, um I would really not want that light shining shining in my house at night. And I hope those concerns get addressed or at least considered as the lighting details become considered.
Yep, so as it currently stands, what we would propose for lighting would be the typical, what we call a Cobra light. So it's essentially just an old street light on a utility pole. Um and I believe there are there are guards and things like that that you could be installed to prevent light from maybe going backwards onto a property. Or there's a window nearby, things like that, that could help put the light where it's really needed um and not kind of the surrounding area. Um that is all things that we can kind of work through as we look at where the lighting goes in the project and maybe try something else to consider.
Thank you.
And then one last thought, as I've been listening, um about the transition from the open drainage ditch to a closed drainage system. Um what will be put in place to manage the debris and storming trash as it flows through the 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 drain and potentially clogs it up? And what what burden might there be placed on the town or on the people who are near that drainage? For backup of debris in the system?
For backup of debris in the system and cleaning it out and, and who's ultimately gonna be responsible for that? And are there details of, of uh drain covers, for instance, in the road where the access can be, be made?
Yep, so uh there are several options that we could use there, uh there are. A bunch of different products that can be considered for uh putting anywhere from a grate over a pipe bend. And to, you know, special brings on catch bases and things like that, it really just depends on how we. End up handling that drainage in a, in a final condition, um so it's all things that we would look at. As far as maintenance, Eric can correct me if I, if I'm wrong, um the town would. Really be in charge of maintaining the catch bases being cleaned and things like that where they are on town roads. Um but you know, we, we look at the, the benefit that the catch bases provide and, and cleaning that would be needed. Um catch bases have what's called some, so they have designated areas to collect that silty sand material. Um that would deposit flow and not necessarily. Uh hopefully they, the first ones really full, the second one's less full, and as you go down the line, they're less, less. Um so your maintenance service may be.
And those stuffs can be cleaned out.
Right, and they use, uh they can use a really large vacuum or things like that to just really suck all that material out and. Um I think one over here that we'll jump over.
Uh Doug Riley, Mrs. Conde Chro, you've had a lot of talk, and it seems about the raised speed bumps for the car park. What speed do you expect a vehicle to be crossing those two structures?
So the advisory, we go on advisory speed limit, so I think really it's a, it's a yellow speeding sign, so we may have seen them in other locations. Uh we typically would put about fifteen miles per hour when we go those advisory speeds, so. Um so.
Well, it's kind of a human uh reaction to expect the speed or hope the speed in front of our homes is twenty miles an hour. But everywhere around it's sixty miles an hour. And.
Together.
Okay.
So, uh so and that's where we talked about using them in succession with each other, so multiple to help. Help meter that speed and prevent people from fifteen at this spot, but going right back to sixty at the next spot, so that would be the intent of that and using multiple.
The, the downside is these raised things are very tough on the suspension of all of our, all of our vehicles.
Yes, uh.
And, and the commercial vehicles, including school buses, they're only gonna cross these things at three to five miles an hour. And here it's pretty much in traffic, but it's something to be thinking about, can't be all just one way.
Right, so. You men, you mentioned, you used the term disruptive to traffic, and I think that's part of the intent of those speed bumps to some degree, the speed, the raised intersection and the uh. The, the speed humps. We like to think that they provide a good safety benefit and when handled at the correct speed. Then uh damage to suspension and wear and tear and stuff like that should be mitigated, so the hope is that this, the overall. Situation and the reduced speed, the safer environment, especially for pedestrians. Where we have pedestrians that might be crossing the road, that's a very important thing is to have the vehicle slow down. And have appropriate speed as we approach a crossway, we had one over there, we'll jump back over.
So I am a parent of honor, I live on the other side of the parents', and I walk here quite a bit, but before I answer my question. I'd like to make a comment about the speed hubs, already in the nineteen eighties, I studied. Speed hubs and speed cables and buses and ambulances, the people on the bulk of the back of the ambulances. And uh one of the issues is that an ambulance with somebody with spinal injury. They will have to slow down the variable speeds, but our few ambulance was trapped in here, and on average, we save more injuries. By having the speed hubs than what the negative is of the speed hub. And with respect to buses, I, we didn't study various steel buses, we studied variable city buses. And for standing passengers, it could be somewhat of an issue for people sitting down. There was no issue for bus passengers. And with respect to automobiles, we have speed hubs in order too, and they are three inches high. If they are three inches high, the typical driver will be nowhere between twenty five and thirty five when the advice to speed is being taken. And that is like next to the roundabout, and the roundabout itself certainly allowed to twenty five. So uh if we make them four inches high, and if especially if we make the what's up, the circular British what's up. It will slow people down better, and in Manchester, we have those, and I think they may be slightly higher than this. Complete leader's choice, slightly more than four inches maybe might be safe because they are very effective. And but I want to help with the, and I will have a lot of use. And one alternative to the raised crosswalk, the second raised crosswalk, which is only crosswalk, is to put in what's called early cushions. The cushions are uh two cushions and then regular automobiles will have to go over it. While a steel bus is straddling the oilers, so there's less impact for tire tracks, commercial vehicles and wide vehicles. And if we wanted to function as a raised crosswalk, those cushions are a good, but that's something we can discuss in the future. So I will.
May mind the passenger vehicles will try to avoid part of the cushion.
Yes.
The one, one wheel.
Yes, absolutely. So uh now to my question, and that is, and nobody has talked about the northern end of the side. It seems to be a town property or the bare ground property and then on side of the property moved in. Uh so there's a porting and then a street, that's why we have a stone uh. That's very similar, and uh what are you doing to exist in the reward? Are you removing that, have you looked at that?
So when we develop our cross sections and really determine our grading limits, we will be taking a look at the stone wall, and that would be something that we kind of. Review, um when we install the curving, there's a chance that the grade ends up being raised. Um so how that exactly ties into the stone wall and, and what goes into that, we'll be looking at as we progress the design. Uh the trees would be cut back, so there would be some clearing, um to make room for the construction activity and things like that, but. Uh if, if it is something that we want to remain, um we can certainly look at.
Ideally, I would like it to be of the same, just the reward, but that would possibly wouldn't be within the data frame. Even, even if it is, that was probably, that may not be a possibility.
So you're saying put the side wall on the, on the bare grounds, I call the bare ground side.
If, I don't think they start paying properly.
Yeah, it's a little, little line there.
Um that, that's the dividing line between town um property and the, and neighbor.
Yeah.
Scroll it down, yeah.
Down. It's a big line through right, right over there.
Yes.
Yeah. Maybe they don't show it there.
Yes.
Uh well, one, um they have a pair of speed bumps on Winter Street in Augusta. I drive it regularly on the way up to the airport, and you get used to them very quickly and you cut your speed pretty quickly. Uh the area that uh was just up on the screen, Eric.
Well, welcome to see, see you Tom here, I'll, I'll get it right back.
The, that section actually, you know, looking at the edge of the current paved road. Um the stone wall is probably about the ten foot mark uh where it presently exists, so I'm not sure if it's gonna impact, it'll, it'll be close. Um the uh, uh this part's for Eric and probably for Catherine. Um it is probably the most dangerous section that we currently walk. Because when you get to um that raised section, uh people who would normally give you a little bit of extra room. Uh and move over can't do that anymore, uh because they can't see ongoing traffic, so they have to stick in their lane. Uh and it almost seems like it got narrower, I don't know why, but uh and it's sort of. Still at crisis, uh because the, uh after you get past the blue stone, it's pretty much all poison ninety. Uh and, and, and a fairly substantial grade off, um and understanding that. This is probably at least eighteen months away, it would be wonderful if we could fill it with even some gravel. Um to at least widen the space so we have to walk um to, you know, even three feet. Uh which would be well more than we currently have, because it's, it's getting tough to walk up that side, and you, you do walk up on that side. Because if you're on the opposite side, pickup trucks coming down, won't see you at all. Uh and at least when you're on the east side, you've got, the traffic is coming and they can see you coming. But that section, um if it could just progress in gravel, uh as a town project. Um for the section from where the sign starts through recreation area. Uh um it would certainly make it considerably safer over that eighteen month. And probably wouldn't interfere with yours because you're gonna have to raise to grade anything substantially. My request for, I, I walk it daily um with my dog, um and the rest of it as well. Um and it's, it's an area you, you get through with trepidation. Uh and Mr. Perry really doesn't like you cutting across this line, so you have to stick to the road.
It's something we can look at, um I, I do want to make sure that we're not creating uh additional issues. Obviously, I don't want to put a bunch of gravel and have it end up on Mr. Perry's lawn, um because of watch outs, things like that, we do have fully graded. Um it's something that we'll look at, uh can't make any promises, and I, I do want to make sure that we're not putting. Uh you know, a, a lot of money into something that's gonna be dug up or, or, or redone. Um but I, I hear what you're saying, I, I agree with the visibility and sidelines, I mean, I, I'd like to walk there with my kids. Uh and, and it is, um it's a little tricky, uh but uh yeah, uh that's something we can look at.
Hey, my name is Joe Parker, I'm on Church Road. And just looking at this, I apologize, I got here late to the meeting, so maybe you just might have covered already, but, and I might have missed the previous meeting. It seems like there's a lot of complexity going on on the sidewalk now, and if you look at Church Road, it's a pretty simple country road right now, it's straight, you know, you turn that corner, you head north, it's. Straight up and down, now we're adding parking stalls and, you know, these little grassy areas. And one of the things that we're also talking about this evening is the fact that it's a town road, not a state road. So the fact that we will be responsible for uh the white stuff that's coming here next to the mother's house and lots of that. So the plan, I think, is to see, like, I look on that road and a lot of times in my area, I have a hard time dissing your nail box, so now we're asking. We're putting a sidewalk, that's got these in and out swales and uh parking stalls, everything, so. Was there consideration between this project and the town of what this is going to look like at the end and how extensive it's gonna be for. Maintenance of the summer removal side of things? And additionally, I just want to comment too, like, when you talk about speed humps and raised crosswalk too, that's. You know, you're having that other burden on top of the plow, that's where you're gonna fall down, trying to get that snow. He comes, I was trying to make my work.
Yo, not in front of your property anymore, dude.
So uh as far as the uh the maintenance goes, we, we have had a couple of questions on the chat on maintenance as well. So the speed tables uh really are, it's just like a, a bump in the road. Uh the, the plow truck might have to slow down to say fifteen or twenty miles an hour. Um most of the current contractor trucks uh on our, on our roads go just that speed or a little bit faster anyway, they do a good job. Uh of going slow and not trying to power blast something twenty feet off the edge of the road, uh which can damage nail boxes and things. Um so basically the maintenance, winter maintenance would be the same as it is currently. Um and it, it would look similar, very similar to what we see on the existing sidewalk, uh where if we have plows. Um we try to wing it in a little bit with the plow, but uh if we can't get those. Uh then we have the sidewalk machine that we currently use on, again, on, on main street, uh that can take care of some of that stuff and do a little bit of that maintenance. So there's no question, there's an added maintenance component of this to the town, um by having to clear a sidewalk. Um that's one of those cost benefit things that we need to look at. Um a lot of the costs are already in place for those equipments, so the additional uh staff time. Uh but um in, in my view anyway, and hopefully not alone, the safety uh component of this. Um is uh is weighted more heavily than a small added maintenance cost. Uh another question um was about um whether or not the tree roots were being taken into consideration, and then I guess the answer is yes. Um um but the sidewalk actually does a really good job avoiding most large trees. Um and there may be um some areas where there's, there's root destruction, but uh that's something that we would have to um to look at more closely as we get the design. Further along, um the engineer will be looking at root ball, um seeing where things go, but um. That's definitely a consideration, uh not, not the only one, but a, but a consideration, and a couple of those questions came from Sue Ray, I just want to point out. We do have some folks that are identified on the um Zoom, I'm not getting questions from them, uh because they're probably from Moscow. Uh but uh Sue Ray uh did, did ask this question, so I want to say that and acknowledge her. Yes.
Um so I'm gonna talk a little bit to what Pear mentioned. And um Mr. Riley, that on Winter Street in Augusta, those speed humps work really well, they haven't been destroyed by plows. People don't go speeding through there anymore, and they used to just fly up and down that hill, and. I don't think there's really any big issue with them, um another place that has that, that I was really surprised a couple of years ago when I went over it is. Commissant Street that goes from Westbrook to uh Portland, over to uh Congress Street area. Uh and that was, that's a, a huge cutoff for people to not have to go on the larger roads with lots of traffic lights, there's no traffic light on it. I think there are two raised crosswalks, and I think there is either three or four additional raised speed humps. And it works perfectly, they haven't been destroyed um by plows, the sidewalks are accessible, it's a really nice residential area. And now people go thirty five-ish on that road than they used to go fifty plus. Um so I think there are multiple examples we can look at to see that they are effective. Um and if people are really bothered by them, then they can go on the other roads that don't have them and have the traffic lights and more traffic. Um and in Manchester, that's a perfect example of a job done wrong, um the speed humps are too high on that road by fielder's choice, and they're way too short. So when you hit them, you go boom, boom, and even if you're going five miles an hour, they're really destructive, and then the other ones they've had there for multiple years. Are actually parking bollers, that they're having to drive over. Um and they've left all of them, so now there's five on this one little street, and you know, Manchester needs a different plan really for that. Um and those probably will be destroyed by the plows this winter. Um and I know, I, one of the questions I read, these are not removable humps you're talking about, these are permanent, they don't come up in the winter, they're. They work really well.
Yeah. They would mean would pay you.
Right, and they're long, you said they're ten feet, so.
So they're ten feet up, ten feet wide and ten feet down, so they're actually third, the total length is about thirty one.
So your car's.
Might be a six foot. Like on the top, with ten over.
But so your car's not going up and then down, your car's gently rising up, over and down.
Right, so they're not meant to serve as a speed bump.
Right.
It's why we kind of use the speed hump or speed table term, where it's a more gradual, but just as effective uh.
No launchability.
Yeah.
No action.
The thought is correct, they should have been on a six feet wide, because you want the front wheel to go down while the rear wheel goes up.
Yeah.
To get the.
That was.
Five miles.
Right.
Yeah. Just one last, final thought, can you turn back and see the hump table bump, whatever you want to call that. Um Christine Paul, I'm from Peachtree, uh I'm right where it's supposed to go from thirty five to twenty five, it's between uh Maya property and the water company's property. And if we could get one there, that would be fabulous, or within that, that area. To kind of like slow the people's roll before they get to that sidewalk.
Yeah.
Uh because I refuse to back out my driveway, my husband is more gutsy than I am. Uh I've got a little short deep wrangler and I've still been flipped coming out driving.
Uh I've got a little short deep wrangler and I've still been flipped coming out, driving out of my driveway. And I'm like watching to the left like a paranoid cat.
Yes, that is definitely a location we can look at at opposing one. Um again, it like I did, it kind of depends on the speed of
Absolutely, but I just wanted to get that on the record one more time. Because we can, they'll sometimes get to one.
I'm a fan of spacing perspective, too. Insistent spacing is preferred. Um so and just briefly looking at that graphic, it seems like that would actually divide the section of road in about four. Um about where you're talking. So there's that. Okay, well, there are no other questions. I want to again say thank you for everybody coming out. We appreciate the feedback and it really helps us develop a a good design that everybody can look at. So I look forward to seeing everybody at the next, at the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.